I'll call the February 24th, 2015 study session, Newport Beach City Council to order. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Muldoon, anything you clarified?
No.
Councilmember Duffy?
None.
Councilmember Curry?
Just one question, though. On our Mousier ordinance, we had an opportunity to work with our hoteliers and make sure that they're, and our major day spa people, to make sure that they're comfortable with where we're going with this.
Need to come up?
I don't have an answer.
Okay.
Lieutenant. All right. I think it's a good idea to have the ordinance. I just want to make sure we've worked with the community on putting it together.
They did. I know they did closely in the development of this, and then we gave an extra two weeks to review it, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe we are. I don't want to misspeak, though, but Lieutenant Short will be here. I'll make sure that he answers that question for you, sir.
Councilmember Pieter. Councilmember Petros.
Yeah, I've got a couple. On that very same item, I thought Mr. Mosier actually had a very insightful comment and wanted to question, what is the reasoning behind bringing the REZO forward now and not holding that until the second reading?
I think that's a good point. Why don't we continue that REZO to the second meeting, and we'll have it adopted then if you move forward with the ordinance? That's a good point.
Thank you, Mr. Harp. Secondly, on items eight and nine, I had the opportunity to go down and look along Ocean Boulevard, and it appears that these are requests being made in the context of a much larger project, which includes a new driveway, ramp leading down to the homes there. And I just was wondering, Mr. Webb, if you wouldn't mind commenting on why these items are coming forward now as opposed to being bundled into the overall work product? And could we have possibly saved the residents any of the fees there by virtue of bundling these?
Thank you, councilmember. It is possible. I noticed that we are doing a driveway replacement as a separate encroachment, and that's a separate action. And then you have two before you tonight, three separate homes, two actions. I don't know if they coordinated, and staff doesn't always know if they're together. So the driveway is underway. It's actually being built right now, and that request was already approved. Had we known, possibly, the homeowners could work, because it is the same public right-of-way they're asking to use?
Thank you.
On item number nine, are those improvements that are already in place and we're asking for the encroachment agreement, because one wasn't obtained when they built them, or what? I didn't understand that part of it.
That's as I understand it. One of the walls, this one, is an existing crib wall they're replacing back in the public right-of-way, and we'll need an agreement. So we don't have one, and we'll have to do that. The other one is a brand-new wall, I think item eight.
So eight is brand-new. The other two under item nine, those are existing walls that don't have encroachment permits or improvements, I guess I should say.
Item eight is to install a new wall. Again, item nine is replace an existing wall.
Replace an existing wall. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, my thought there was that if we, if the homeowners knew that they were going to come forward with a bundled package that included the driveways as well as the walls, that this could have been put together under one application and some accommodation made so that the plan check and the processing of the encroachment could have occurred all at once, possibly reducing the fee burden to the residents and accelerating this project. But as Mr. Webb has said, it didn't sound like there was a lot of that coordination from the resident's side. So I would just suggest, if you're out there in TV land and you've got a big project coming forward, it might be helpful to, and cost-effective, to try and bundle as many of those improvements as you can.
And to follow up on that, we'd love to look at that in the future. We'll ask to see if we can do it. I know each one of these properties requires its own encroachment agreement that runs with the property, so there would still, it could be one council action, but two different agreements. So.
Thank you, Mr. Webb.
Mayor Protim Dixon?
No, I have no comments.
Okay, and I have no items. So our first discussion item is the presentation by the Orange County Sanitation District staff.
Mr. Mayor, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I live within 500 feet of this project, so I'm going to hurriedly recuse myself. Hurry up and get into the back. Hurry.
I'll speak slow. So tonight, we have with us, the Orange County Sanitation District has requested at your last council meeting, the general manager, Jim Herberg, is with us tonight, and also the director of engineering, Rob Thompson, will be giving a presentation to you and address any questions you have.
Thank you, Dave, and thank you, Mayor Selich, and members of the council for having us here this afternoon to talk about our project in Coast Highway. We do recognize that this is a large disruptive project in a heavily traveled area near residences, businesses, and a lot of traffic impacts have been experienced by the community. And we apologize for the disruptions and impacts that the community has experienced. But let me begin by talking briefly about why we're there. This is a very important project. The problem that we're trying to solve is that all of the wastewater from most of the city of Newport Beach is carried by these large 50-year-old steel pipelines under pressure in Pacific Coast Highway. And over the last 50 years, they've experienced corrosion, and over the last 35 years or so, the flow has increased with development, and that's caused the pressure in the pipelines to increase over time as well. These steel lines, over time, have become more vulnerable to bursting, and the photograph up above, the two photos that you see are from 1981, when there was a break in that line. And there was a large spill, about 6 million gallons of raw sewage entered the bay, and you can see that the highway was closed off at that time. That's exactly what we're trying to prevent here. And this project is actually one part of a coordinated effort of many projects the sanitation district is doing in the city of Newport Beach. The good news is that significant progress has already been made, and that help is on the way, relief is on the way as the program winds down. But we're not complete. There will continue to be work. Rob Thompson, our director of engineering, will give you the schedule going forward. He'll talk about the mitigation measures that are in place today to minimize impacts on the community, and what the work looks like going forward, and summarize the progress that's been done today. So with that intro, I'll introduce Rob Thompson to come up and talk about the project.
Thank you, members of the council. We appreciate the opportunity to give you an update on this important project. Quickly, who we are. We're Orange County Sanitation District. We're a regional wastewater agency, serving most of north central Orange County. We have a service area of about 479 square miles, service 2.5 million residents, and treat about 200 million gallons a day. Your city is a big part of our service area. We have a lot of assets contained within the city. What you see in the red pipes are gravity sewers, and the green are our force mains, force mains being pipes under pressure where we're pumping sewage from a low point to a high point. We have a significant amount of work, as most of these assets were put in place in the 50s, 60s, and 70s. So we understood for quite some time that we were going to be disrupting the city. So what we did was not approach this on a project basis, but on a program basis, trying to look at where we were going to do work and how we could sequence the work to minimize the pain. Unfortunately, it leads to a longer duration, which leads to fatigue, and people do get tired of seeing the streets torn up. But it is necessary work. We've finished the work in Balboa on the peninsula. We finished the work in Dover Drive. We're about halfway through the force main work, and next year, we will try and tackle the purple jobs there up Newport Boulevard. But this is by far the most impactful piece of the program. So what we have on our project, which we call 560, the force main, I'm sorry, the force main project, is a project that we've worked from the design phase to try and minimize the impact. All through the design process, we've worked to find the particular technique that would minimize the traffic impact. We understand that this is a traffic job with pipes under it. So what we have are two force mains, a north and a south. They're redundant. Currently, the south force main, which is on the lower half, is undersized. It was put in first. It's a little smaller than the north force main, so the work has to be done such that we can always flow all the water all the time. So one pipeline is always in service while we're working on the other. And the second piece is to upsize the southern pipe so it's full capacity. In that way, we have true redundancy, and we can do maintenance in the future without any impact at all. A couple of nice points about this, there were a lot of crossover valves that had been in the streets. They have been removed, and all the crossover valving is now in our pump stations, out of the traffic lanes, out of the public impact, so we can exercise those valves, work those valves, and the public will never know or be impacted. So there's a lot of positives to the eventual project, but we do understand it's painful in the short term. So we've done open trench, which is what you see with the excavators digging along trenches. That's usually necessary where you have to upsize a pipe. We have a jack-and-bore technique that was used early on when we had to cross PCH at Newport. It's the blue section of the map. That was our first effort. That was our first delay, when we hit an unknown utility and had to move our pit. It's a big deal to move a pit, because it's a very tight fit, making sure all the traffic still works and all the other services remain in place. We also have a tunnel boring machine that's been launched. That's the red pieces. It is launched just west of the Newport Bridge, and it is currently about 60 feet down the hole and moving along through a clay, very difficult section. We're hoping to speed up as we change from a clay to a more sandy soil. And then we have cured-in-place pipe. This is the least impactful. It's where you'll see the pits dug throughout the project. We cut the pipe, clean the pipe. They pull a sleeve of felt with an epoxy in there, and they can cure that pipe with hot water over time and make a brand-new 50-year pipe without the need to dig up the street. All you have are a few pits along the way. That's currently what you see being set up in the western part of the project, and we'll kind of step through that now. So this is the project area. What you see is the section from Newport up to our Bitterpoint pump station around 60th Street. Those little markers you see on the yellow lines are the pits that are dug for the cure-in-place pipe. And I'll walk you through the schedule. I know there's a lot on the agenda tonight. So this is the work that's going on right now. They're actually lining up the trucks. You've seen in situ form trucks out there, I believe, if you've driven that today, and they're setting up to move. This will go fairly quickly once they start work. There is one caveat. Because the tunnel work is being done, we can't have conflicting traffic control, so the last two segments will have to be done after the tunneling work is done. So that may push us past our goal of being done before the Memorial Day holiday, but we're working very hard to make sure that that does not happen. Next year, there's also work on the north force main. So all the work this year is on the south force main. The north is carrying the flow. Next year, we'll flop it. We'll have the south force main in service and the north being upgraded. Then we move to the other side of the project, from Newport down to Dover. You can see in gray what has been completed. So the work from Crestview Drive up to our Rocky Point pump station is basically complete. We've opened up sections of the K-rail to let traffic in on the left turns. The pits still exist, because we have to do that south force main cure-in-place pipe, but we intend to get there very soon. Riverside intersection is another area. We realize all the intersections are very critical, and we are double-shifting the contractor through those areas. We anticipate the Riverside intersection to be open this week. That will allow us to continue our work in the CIPP area down by Dover and to continue the tunneling work under Newport Boulevard. The next steps after we open the Riverside intersection are to move the crew back and finish the work from the end of the tunnel pit, which exists by Sterling BMW, to the piece of pipe that's hanging out of the trench at Riverside, and then begin the work around Testan Avenue. Phase two is next year's work, and that is the abandonment of the northern, the existing northern force main. A lot of the work we've done is more than was required, but it really cut the work in half. Instead of digging up the street twice, we're digging up the street once, and then just abandoning the north piece next year. That involves us having tunnels, I'm sorry, having pits dug, and then filling that old pipe with concrete so it doesn't collapse in the future. That's very quick work. There will be pits, there will be impact, but it'll be much shorter than the current work in this area. We have been working very hard to mitigate all along. It started in design and picking the kinds of technologies we've used. But in order to reduce the impact to the area, we have extended our tunneling. Initially, the plan called for it to be closer to the bridge, a shorter tunneling section, but that would have had a greater impact on traffic, right where the traffic comes up from the peninsula. We would have really pinched down that area to one lane, so we pushed the tunnel out a little and created a better traffic flow with two lanes. We have the contractor double-shifted with extended hours. We've worked hard to get left-turn access into all the businesses where possible. We have worked with the city very diligently. They've been a great partner, pointing out every opportunity for us to improve, and we've made the changes to the traffic control all along the way. We've also invested in ground-penetrating radar to look for utilities that weren't identified by anyone. It's been very successful. We've found tens of facilities that we didn't know about before we dug and hit them. There is a big however. We have hit some utilities despite our best efforts. There have been four different incidences where, in one case, we hit our own pipe. Contractor was digging a pit and was putting down shoring to create a safe environment for the operators to work in, and the beams to support that shoring went through our pipe. The lesson learned there, that we're carrying through the whole project, is an improved work system where the contractor has to go through more steps with their dig permitting, and they cannot penetrate the ground without going through these steps. In addition, we hit two gas pipes. This is an example of the gas pipe that you may have heard about. The first strike on this pipe was when they were sawcutting. You'll see on the left side how it's much higher in the trench than it is on the right. They potholed, they found the pipe on the right side. It was well below the two layers of paving. There's an asphalt layer and what's called the old tank road, which is a concrete layer. They found it, they saw cut on one side, they went to saw cut on the other side, not knowing that the pipe raised significantly in elevation in that short width, and they nicked the pipe, causing a gas leak, closing the road for the evening. Gas company came in and fixed it, so now we pothole on both sides. We don't assume that things are straight and level. We're making sure that we don't repeat that error. Unfortunately, a few days later, the pipe was left in this condition. This is the condition between the issues. The operator of the excavator violated the policy. He began digging when his spotter was changing sides of the trench. So there was a spotter. He was helping the excavator miss it. The spotter told him to stop. He was walking around, so he had to walk up the trench to a bridge. He went across, and while he did that, the operator chose to move the bucket. He hit the pipe, caused a second gas leak. That operator's no longer on the project. We have a policy now, a bucket-down policy, where if the spotter holds up his hand and needs to change position, before he leaves, the operator will put the bucket on the ground outside of the trench. He'll readjust, and then they'll go back to work. So we are trying to mitigate our problems that way. There was one more issue that happened, where we cut a pipe belonging to Caltrans, which powered the signals at Riverside. We called out Caltrans twice, asked them to mark their pipe. They weren't sure where it was. We tried to use ground-penetrating radar, couldn't find the pipe. When they did the cut, and again, these are deep cuts, because there's two layers of paving, an old, I guess 1940s vintage concrete and asphalt layer on top, as they cut through, they hit that utility underneath, and the signal was out of service for a day. It's hard to know where everything is, especially when the owner of the utility can't mark it for you. We do our best, and we try and pothole to the greatest extent possible, but in that case, there was a hit, and we apologize for that. We work very hard to reach out to the community, so there are no surprises. We've worked very closely with the city staff. There's a whole bunch of statistics I could rattle off, but I think I've probably gone through my time. If you have specific questions, I can certainly answer them. We have hired a third party to be available 24/7, along with our own staff, so it's a significant investment in the program, and specifically this project, to minimize the lack of knowledge. We're trying to make sure everybody knows what's happening, even if it is difficult. So with that, I'll leave you with a picture of what we're really trying to prevent.
Councilmember Petros.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming out, and I don't want to suggest that what you're doing isn't important. This is a priority project for the city. This type of infrastructure is one that everybody needs, but nobody really thinks about. Once you hit the flusher, it's, you know, it's out of sight, out of mind, yet the quality of the bay is ever-present in all our minds. So we're grateful that you are doing this at this time. But as you said, it's a very long project, and I have attended each one of your stakeholder meetings at the outset, and am just interested in the fact that what I heard you say is that you're learning lessons on the job. And unfortunately, it would have been nice to have all of that learned beforehand. These types of things, you know, you hit a gas line once, oops. You hit it twice. That's hard for the public to take. You hit a Caltrans traffic signal a week later. It just, it brings accountability questions to the public, and it's something that I am more interested, you know, it's water under the bridge. It's happened, and you're moving forward, and I'm grateful for that. I would like to make sure that your schedules, as recently as updated by in January, show that this Phase One is complete through this corridor in May. Are you still committed to that schedule for completion of the Phase One? Not the abandonment, but the overall installation by May of this year?
We are certainly committed to that schedule.
What's the likelihood of hitting it?
Put a percentage on it? I would lean toward 80 to 85% would be my best estimate. We are still digging. The tunneler is pushing his tunneling machine through thick clay. We know it's a difficult section. It's understood. But when you're digging, it could be difficult. If we get a March miracle, and it starts to rain, like we hope it might, we will lose days. So to give you an ironclad guarantee, I can't do it. If things continue at the current pace they're moving, I think we'll make it. We have, what is difficult for the public is you don't see the progress that's made. So when you see an open trench, what you don't see is that we have to strip the two, or in some cases, three layers of pavement. We have to de-water the trench. That takes a week just for the natural percolation to occur. You have to fuse the pipe for many, we're going to lay 2,000 feet next week, and just pull it into the trench all at once. You then have to fill with concrete, let it harden. It comes in big batches, is what I'm trying to get at, through a long process.
When you do complete Phase One, are the K-rails going to be taken up? And so we'll get, we'll get two to three lanes of traffic in each direction restored, at least until February of 2016?
Till Phase Two begins.
Yeah, which?
We'll work with the city on when that begins and how that gets sequenced. We will have some work in September.
That's September, Tony, not February.
Some of the work, I believe, in the west side is February, but the Miracle Mile, sorry, the Mariners Mile, or Muskier, I was thinking about Snow Summit already.
Was it September, or? Okay, well, whenever.
Some work in September.
February to May. Phase Two, February 2016 to May 2016, for the abandonment of the pipe. What's September?
It's a mistake on the slide, sorry. There will be work in September.
So it goes, Phase Two goes September 2015 through May 2016 with a work stoppage during Christmas?
Yes.
Councilmember, is there any way envisioned or give the council an idea of what's impacted during the next year? Are you talking four lanes in each direction? Are you going to be down to one lane in each direction again?
So for this section, the majority of the work from Newport to Dover is the abandonment of the north force main, which is the digging of the pits and the filling of the existing pipe with slurry, so it doesn't collapse. So that work will go relatively quickly. I'm looking at the project manager for an affirmative yes. This is Martin Dix, project manager for OCSD.
Yeah, the work in this area.
Yeah, the work in this area, the question that was asked earlier is, what are our percent chances of completing the work? I think the work east of Newport Boulevard, which what you see on the current map, the chances are really strong. We're having some issues with the tunneling, because we're experiencing really thick clay. And so it's slowed our production to about 20 feet per day. So once we get past that clairely and into more favorable soils, then the tunneling production should be about 60 feet per day. So that is the one caveat, because once the tunneling is complete, then the work that we need to be removed, like the CAPP that's in conflicting traffic control with the tunneling, that'll take place. And that work is west of Newport Boulevard. So that is probably the work right now that looks like will not be completed by May 22, unless we can figure out some way of sequencing the tunneling with the CAPP work that's at that same location. And we're working on that right now with the contractor.
And the impact there is one lane, the southbound side, except when they're working to do the actual cure, then you'll be two lanes, CAPP work.
Well, and to that point, and I know we want to move this along, but, you know, we say, well, it's only one lane. But the reality is, I don't just travel in one small spot in Newport Beach. I leave my home, and I want to go down to the peninsula, or I want to get off the peninsula. In actuality, what this is, is a closure of a ramp from Newport Boulevard to Coast Highway, the inability to turn left onto Riverside right now, excessive queues on Tustin to try and get up into the heights, and delays along the whole stretch if I want to turn into any of the businesses. So it is much bigger than just, you know, one lane. It's a systematic disruption of travel in the city. So I'm just hopeful, and I know you know that. You have brought that to our attention from the beginning. And I know you've gone through enough Advil on our behalf. Just be done quickly.
That is our goal, to get out as quickly as possible, for everyone's sake, yes.
Any other questions?
Just have a quick question. Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned in one of your earlier slides about after this is completed, you're going up to Newport Boulevard. What is the timing for that?
We are hoping to get that work done, in the purple there, next spring, in concert with the work that's happening on PCH. Knowing that we're already going to have some restrictions, there's already going to be reduced traffic in that stretch. We want to try and get them both done at the same time. So while people are kind of avoiding that area and traffic is lighter, we can make that work happen much more quickly. It is not in the same league as this job. It's a gravity sewer, and we're going to use a pipe-bursting technique, where you pull a pipe through an old pipe. So it should be a much, much less intense impact.
But if I understand what you're saying is that people who travel in both directions will be impacted, particularly people coming off the peninsula?
The upside is this pipe isn't in the street. It's just to the side of the road. If you, as you're heading north, you'll see the manholes that are just off to the side with the raised range.
So you're not going to reduce the lanes?
There will be one lane that's impacted. It's not just one, it's one lane, and I'm really sorry. What we're doing is renewing this, and you'll have 50-year life in all these pipes.
I should be so lucky to...
Mayor Protem, I'm hopeful it's not as bad here. We have three lanes in each direction at that point, and they're talking about one lane. Mark Vukovic is going to be on. He's deputy director city engineer with Mike Senicori. Our two people are really working with the district. So we have a higher level of confidence in this area, but there will be an impact.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, very informative.
Thank you for your patience.
As you guys leave, I want to thank the staff, from Jim to Rob, to your public information folks, for working so closely with our staff. We're not easy to work with, and you guys have been pretty responsive in getting the right information out. So we appreciate that.
Any public comment on this item?
Hold on for a second, Bill. We've got to turn your mic on.
Taking on me again. Going through the village, I was a little concerned with merchants. They bent, they, the district, bent over backwards. I felt added cost to their own project by being convenient, went swift. The big thing, when the traffic signals went out, I got thinking about my own experience here in Newport Beach. 1967, up at Superior and Placentia. There was a building being erected for Newport National Bank. I was just starting out in business on my own. I cut 288 pair of a 400-pair cable, not in conduit, just wires with a shroud around them, going to Hoag Hospital. You couldn't believe the people that were upset. Then I went up here to, in soil conditions. Soil was no problem down there. Finished the last two, built out of the last two lots in Cameo Shores. Had to come down the hill. Everything down here was sandy soil. Man, that was jackhammer coming down those inclines. But I think overall, the one thing I can sit here and see, and the number of people I've been involved with in Sacramento in the construction industry, I think this is a very good educational film, that the radar, I didn't know about deep-penetrating radar and soil. There's been a lot of, it's real education. And the time is of essence, but it's... I get upset with people that say we're inconvenienced. If you were fortunate enough to be born in a hospital, every roof you've slept under, every roof you've worked under was an inconvenience when that project was built. And we've got to understand. I can remember the cry in Los Angeles for the Olympic Games back in the 80s. Turned on the TV that morning, man, there wasn't soul on the freeways. Everything was resolved. Worked. You just got to plan ahead. I could have done a better job getting down here by planning ahead and taking the ferry coming off the peninsula to miss the clothes here at, off the Boulevard, or off Newport on to Pacific Coast Highway. But I think they've done a heck of a job. It has, accidents happen unforeseen. I've had experience on a state highway that cost me a lot of money, but you get through it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is the presentation from the transportation corridor agencies on the San Joaquin Hills corridor refinancing. Steph?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. We're delighted tonight to have Amy Potter. She's the chief financial officer for the toll road agencies, and she'll be giving you a little discussion on the San Joaquin Hills refinancing summary. And just to mention, Michael Carmen is also with us. He's the chief executive officer, not talking tonight, but in the audience if you have questions.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. As mentioned, my name is Amy Potter. I'm the chief financial officer for the transportation corridor agencies, which are the two agencies that run the 73, 241, 261, and 133 toll roads. And I'm here today to provide you with an update on the recent refinancing of the San Joaquin Hills toll revenue bonds. The agencies were formed in 1986 to fill the transportation needs in Orange County, but due to scarce funding for infrastructure, the agencies were set up as toll roads. So nonrecourse toll revenue bonds were issued to pay for the design and construction of the roads. And now we're collecting the tolls to pay back those bonds. So virtually, no taxpayer dollars were used to build the roads. The San Joaquin Hills was the first newly-built toll road in California. So shortly after financing, it became apparent that we would need to refinance the bonds at some point after the transactions and revenues matured on the road. And then in 2011, we did a restructure that was a partial solution. However, in exchange for relaxation of some of the bond covenants, the board was required to use a traffic and revenue consultant annually to maximize the tolls. Well, the good news is that due to the strong performance on the road and the extremely low interest rates, we were able to completely refinance and restructure the bonds, and put together a very strong, long-term financial position. So in exchange for restoring some of the traditional bond covenants, we were able to place the control back with the board in the toll rate-setting process. So now the board will be able to implement more inflationary-type toll rate increases rather than the maximum increases. So what I'm showing you here on this slide is a comparison of the old debt structure to the new debt structure. The red line represents the old debt, and you can see that over that next 10 years, the debt would have grown at a very high growth rate. And there was also a very high peak in the debt service, which is shown in the middle of the slide. And the blue and gray bars represent the new debt structure. And so you see that we decreased it substantially, smoothed it out. We did extend the debt eight years, but we were able to build in some very strong cushion and a structure that should be very sustainable to economic downturns in the future. The board will also have the ability to utilize those future cash flows to pay back that debt early. So really, this refinancing was a great thing for the agency. It placed us in a very solid financial position. We were able to increase our credit rating to investment grade. We restored that toll rate-setting authority to the board, so no longer required to implement those prior 10% increases that we have over the past few years. We were able to lower the debt service growth rate over the next 10 years from 8.8% to 1.6%, and lowered the peak debt service by 83 million. And we also were able to establish some very strong reserves and liquidity, and that will help us to be able to withstand future economic downturns. And then, as mentioned, the board will have the ability also to pay down that debt early. So we're very pleased with the result. Agencies, both agencies now are on very strong financial footing. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions from council? Okay, thank you very much. Steph, did you have anything you wanted to add to that? Any public comments? Okay, thank you very much. That was a very informative presentation. So we'll move on to our next item, which is the options for regulation of water-propelled vessels. Mr. Miller?
Mayor Selig.
Oh, not again.
Well, this doesn't look like a boat, but it is attached to a boat. And I believe you rent them. So as I see it, it is a boat, and I am in the boat rental business, so I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you for that. Chris, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm going to introduce harbor commissioner Bill Kenny, who will present the harbor commission's recommendation from, I think it was October or November of 2014.
Thank you, Chris. Honorable mayor, members of the city council, my name is Bill Kenny, and I chaired the ad hoc committee that studied the vessels propelled by water above the surface. And I'm here this afternoon to present to you the harbor commission's findings and recommendations with respect thereto. Let's start with a definition. The city council referred to the vessels or devices studied by our ad hoc committee as vessels propelled by water above the surface of Newport Harbor. Now, there are several different types of equipment that are available today. Basically, the rider wears a backpack, or boots, or rides a board, or a bicycle type of a device that is connected to a personal watercraft via a hose. Water is forced down, creating a lift, raising the user above the water. There is currently one, yeah, thanks, Chris. There is currently one company with a valid marine activities permit operating in Newport Harbor. That company is only allowed to operate in certain areas within the harbor. Early last year, two other companies inquired about a permit to operate in the harbor. On June 24 of 2014, at the recommendation of the Hartford Resources manager, the city council adopted an urgency ordinance establishing a temporary prohibition on issuance of marine activities permits to businesses engaged in the operation of vessels propelled by water above the surface, and directed the harbor commission to form an ad hoc committee to evaluate the issue and return to the council with recommendations, which is what we're doing this afternoon. On July 21, 2014, the harbor commission created an ad hoc committee consisting of myself as chair and Commissioner Duncan McIntosh. The ad hoc committee initially identified nine issues to be studied. Those were location, safety, sound concerns, operation of equipment, commercial equipment versus private equipment, hours of operation, potential for large wakes, potential for pollution concerns, and other vessels. Four community outreach meetings with the general public were held. Our first meeting was held on August 11 of 2014. The identified issues were addressed, and input from the public was received. There was also public input received at the regularly-scheduled harbor commission meeting on August 13 of 2014. Our second meeting was held on August 20, 2014. Commercial operators were discussed, whether or not to allow them, and if so, where, and how many. And private operators were also discussed, whether to allow them, and if so, where. Third meeting was held on September 3 of 2014, and two new issues were added for discussion, tourist draw and revenue generator. The attendees were then asked whether they were for or against the operation of these devices, and why, in two words or less. There was one in favor, which was the current operator. Three opposed citing noise. Three opposed citing safety. One opposed citing nuisance. And once again, there was public input received at the regular meeting of the harbor commission on September 10, 2014. The final meeting was held October 6, 2014. Two members of the Coast Guard Auxiliary attended that meeting and advised us that the Coast Guard is assessing whether to regulate the operation of these types of vessels. In addition to the public meetings, the members of the ad hoc committee observed the operation by the current operator and experienced the noise level from the water, from the beach, and actually from inside one of the residents' homes. The committee learned that there are significant restrictions that are placed on the commercial operation of these types of vessels in other areas. The committee learned that there are at least three types of equipment currently available: the jetpack, the flyboard, and the jet evader.
I'm just going to play just a few seconds, 30 seconds or so, of each of the videos, so the audience and the council can get a feel for what we're talking about.
And I might add that this is, this was actually taken in Newport Beach, in our harbor.
I've muted the volume, not because we can't hear the, what it sounds like, but just from the music in the background.
Notice the amount of water area that's used.
Now I'll flip to the next video, which is the flyboard. I think we get the picture on that one. And then the last video that I have is the jet evader, which is the closest thing that I can think of to a bicycle, or motorcycle, perhaps. So this gives a flavor of what the market has out there. There are other products as well. There are other products as well, and, and more are being invented, I'm sure, as we speak.
Now, the committee learned that there is currently equipment available for sale to the public for private operation at a very reasonable price, under $6,000. In other words, currently, anyone can purchase one of these devices and utilize it today anywhere in our harbor. Important to note that the current operator utilizes three safety and instructional personnel for each individual operator of the, of the device. However, a private operator of this type of equipment would not have any safety personnel whatsoever. Finally, the committee studied and attempted to identify areas within the harbor where this type of equipment could be operated safely on a commercial basis. Our findings and conclusions were as follows. The public's main concerns were predominantly noise and safety. The current commercial operator, Jetpack America, has had one safety incident that we are aware of in the three years that they've been operating in the harbor. Because of the amount of area required and the need to move around the harbor to mitigate noise, no specific location in Newport Harbor that would mitigate the issues could be designated. Because the goal is to fly high and fast, both commercial and private operation of these devices could regularly violate speed restrictions in Newport Harbor. Because most operators are not experienced in the operation of the equipment, there is significant potential for accidents and injury. And this particular photo doesn't reflect the severity of the situation. I actually witnessed one of the operators miss those two kids in a kayak by no more than two feet. And because the vessels or equipment can be operated outside of Newport Harbor, the commercial operators would still have an economically viable business model if operation within the harbor is banned. For these reasons, the harbor commission, on October 13, 2014, voted unanimously to recommend to the city council that both the commercial and the private operation of vessels propelled by water above the surface be prohibited in Newport Harbor. Thank you.
I have just two more slides to review with the council, and there was some discussion on what Mission Bay does and how Jetpack America operates, so we'll just call it the Mission Bay model. And I will note that the operator, or one of the representatives from Mission Bay, is in the audience and might be able to elaborate on these bullet points that I have. Mission Bay Sports Center has had a master lease with the city of San Diego since 1980, and they sublease to complementary aquatic businesses such as kayak rentals, stand-up paddleboard, jet ski rentals, and the like. Jetpack America is on an, an initial one-year lease with the Mission Bay Sports Center. And as I understand it, there was not an RFP process put out for Jetpack America because there, there were no other competitors out there to compete for an RFP. They have a, and they operate in two designated areas, which I'll show on my next slide. This is a side-by-side to-scale comparison, just to give the council an idea of, of what Mission Bay is and what Newport is. The orange circles on the left-hand side in the Mission Bay picture represent where Jetpack America is allowed to operate. And the red line that is on both pictures, there's one red line on the Mission Bay, and there's actually two red lines, that represents a one-mile marker, just to give a little bit of perspective for size.
Yeah, and if I can just touch on that a minute, Chris. If you notice the amount of open water in Mission Bay versus the tight spaces within Newport Harbor, that one-mile line goes from into the surf, across Newport Harbor, the south side of Lido, across Lido, across the north side of Lido, and all the way up past Pacific Coast Highway. And that doesn't reflect the moorings, it doesn't reflect the navigable channels, which we need to keep clear.
That concludes my presentation, and Commissioner Kenny's.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Kenny or Mr. Miller?
Mr. Petrov.
Real quick, Bill, can you say that you collected public input at four separate meetings? How many folks chose to come to one of these meetings, and how many people actually offered public input?
We had between 10 and 20 people at each of the public meetings. We also had a half a dozen to 12 people at our regularly-scheduled harbor commission meetings. We also did receive a number of emails and support, predominantly from people who were quote-unquote riders. Interestingly, with the exception of support emails from two restaurant managers, those who registered support, none of, none of those folks were Newport residents.
Yes. Thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot to request a speak. Mr. Kenny, obviously, the waterway is blown to the people, not just Newport residents. Were you able to determine if there was any place in the harbor that was safe or more preferable than the current location we're talking about for an operator to, to exist?
Well, again, because of the amount of area that's required to operate, we didn't believe that there was any place in the harbor where either a commercial or a private operation could be successfully operated. Certainly, when we discussed the private operation, the potential to have 20, or 30, or 50 of these operating at one time in the harbor, you know, is frightening. Again, there's this large disparity between the tightness of Newport Harbor and the openness of some of the other harbors like Mission Bay or San Diego Harbor.
Mayor Proton Dixon.
Noise impact. Did you measure the noise?
I'll let Chris speak to that. We did try to get code enforcement to take some decibel readings, but there were issues, and as of this afternoon, they were unable to do so.
Yeah, and we actually tried, we tried a couple different ways. Last fall, we tried to do it kind of on our own, without anybody knowing, so that it could be as true as possible. And it was very difficult to coordinate that and guess when their operating hours were. So then, we tried a different approach in the past two or three weeks to coordinate with them, and for various scheduling conflicts, we, as of today, we could not get out there in time for this meeting.
So, in other words, we do not know the noise levels?
Not from the city's standpoint. The Jetpack America has done a study, and I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but he, they have done a study.
Okay, thank you.
But we do not have verifiable numbers ourselves, no. And Chris, I might ask, do you have the slide that shows the dimensions within Newport Harbor?
With the, this one?
Yes. I think if the council would take a look at this slide, I think it's pretty telling that they're just, when you mark out the moorings and when you mark out the navigable channels, I believe technically that a commercial operator would not be allowed to operate within the navigable channel. We actually measured these distances and found that it's pretty tight.
So how would you, going back to noise, evaluate the noise if we don't have quantitative data? Just say something that we can relate to, like, say, a cigarette boat going five miles an hour, or a, or a wave runner, or a jet ski going five miles an hour, which is a speed limit in the harbor? How would the noise relate to, say, either of those, or anything else you can think of to compare it to?
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm not the one that would be qualified to answer that. I think you're going to have residents that will testify as to their concerns with respect to noise, but at this point, we really don't have any verifiable data that we could use to compare with a boat, or with some other sort of an operation.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Part of the, many of the complaints that we received from the residents in the 18th Street, 19th Street neighborhood were related to noise, and, and it was in the context of having a constant, in their words, a constant vacuum cleaner going on all day, all day. Now, how loud that vacuum cleaner is, but imagine a jet ski, as you just mentioned, going on all throughout their day. And for those who live and work at home, their biggest complaint to us was that it was, it was disturbing, very disturbing to them.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open it for public comment. Anyone wants to speak, please come forward and state your name. Don't all come up at once.
My name is Jack Tingley, and I'm a former Perks Beaches and Recreation Commissioner, and I wholly support the unanimous conclusion of our harbor commission. The safety factor is overwhelming when you think of children, number one. I'll worry about the guys in the big boats later, but let's worry about the children in kayaks, paddleboards, or even swimming past the rope line, which they do all the time at 18th and 19th Street. We don't need one of these accidents to happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Selich and members of the city council, my name is Jim Mosier. This would just seem like a no-brainer to me. The operation seems to be similar to something like water skiing or parasailing, and the more fun it becomes, according to the pictures we saw, the more it creates wakes, exceeds speed limits, and generally just disrupts the quiet enjoyment of the harbor for everybody else. And like a parasailing operator, I'm, I'm sure they would like to operate in the harbor, where it's more visible, but we've been told that the operation can take place in the ocean, where it's much less disruptive, and it just seems the appropriate decision for this matter. Thank you.
Yep.
Hi, how are you? My name is Chris Del Rey. This is my first city council meeting, so excuse my awkwardness. I live on Lido Peninsula. In fact, my house is literally on the beach, or on the corner house right there. When we first bought the house there, we were looking in the neighborhood, walking around. I was being shown, shown around by real estate agents, and I saw the jetpacks up there, and was fascinated, amazed. I couldn't get my camera out quick enough. My kids went crazy. It was fun. We bought the house, lived there for, we'd been there for four years. For the first two years, we saw it out quite a bit. The noise that people are saying that it is, I'm not getting it. I think we can focus on any noise. And in fact, as we were talking about it, I don't know if anybody notices the noise of the air conditioner in this room. I'm sure many of you didn't hear it, but if I tell you to listen for it, you can hear it. Either that, or it's the projector of this. We can focus on any noise. If somebody ruffling paper in the room, you may not notice it, but if somebody says, "Notice the ruffling of the paper in the room," you're going to notice it. I'm there all day while they're going on Saturdays and Sundays on their busiest days. I'm right there. I invite you to my house, and I'm not hearing this drone and constant. Okay, so that's one thing. After two years of, of it being out there, it's more to me entertainment and fun, and people we have over enjoy it, but I said, "I got to do this one time." So I finally did it, and it was amazing. I enjoyed it. I'm hearing about tight spaces. Well, as a flyer, there's a lot of space. Comparing it to parasailing, not even close. They have kill switches. You don't have a kill switch on a parasail. If somebody's even in remote danger, these pilots are so experienced, they kill it right away before it's even close. Sometimes pilots will say, "Why did you kill it so soon?" Because you were even close to possibly something, and I haven't seen it. I've flown for about a year and a half now, haven't seen this danger in somebody, you know, the kayak thing also. You know what's more dangerous for the kayaks and the paddleboards? Is them falling all over the place in front of yachts. That's dangerous. But jetpacks coming close to them, I just think sometimes it's just getting exaggerated for other reasons, I think. So, for me, I see safety, I see enjoyment. When we fly, we have people with cameras that are out. I see elderly people with their thumbs up, laughing and smiling. I see kids. I, I just think it's a very positive image for the harbor. I think it's great. Living as a resident for the past four years on Lido Peninsula, right where I can see it with an earshot, and not being bothered by it, not even my neighbors. Nobody's ever said, "Oh, my gosh, what a nuisance." I haven't seen it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Raquel Del Rey, and I'm Chris's wife. And first of all, I'm a mother, so we have three little girls. They're 13, 12, and 9.
Go ahead.
And we have a lot of cousins that come over, a lot of friends. For me, as a mother, safety is first, so if at any point I felt that this is unsafe, I would not allow them to be paddleboarding and me videoing Chris as he's, you know, enjoying this beautiful sport. So from the safety point of view, I don't get, you know, how it is an issue, especially, and I just heard that they've just had one incident in so many times that people have enjoyed this. Also, our neighbors and everybody that comes to visit, we show them around all the beautiful restaurants, we look at the sunsets, we'll go on Duffy rides, and what it is that they remember, the highlight of the trip is just seeing this activity. I mean, it's so unique, and I think it's healthy, I think it's wonderful. For the Fourth of July parade, you know, it's always so exciting, and like Chris mentioned, we live right by the beach. All the boats and all the floats that came around, they were great, but when jetpack came around, I mean, that was like when everybody went crazy. So I think it's a wonderful thing for our community, and I think it should remain there very strongly. Thanks.
Yeah. Next speaker, please.
My name, excuse me, my name is Pam Whiteside. I live on, in the main turning basin, in a condominium, and I have a four-unit apartment building there as well. Excuse me. I don't want to emphasize the noise, but I've lived with it out in front of me, and to shut it out, you have to shut your, you have to shut your windows, summer or winter. The docks, the boats rock against the pilings and, and against the docks from the wakes. And I have seen, the whole point of the exercise is to go as fast and as high and as close to out-of-control as you can get. And there are so many young people, and people of all ages, on stand-up paddleboards. Somebody's going to get hit by a flying body, and, you know, whether that's going to kill the body or the person on the paddleboard, you know, who knows? But I'm wholly in support of the commissioner's recommendation, so thanks very much.
Yeah.
Chris, Chris, is there any way to, to speak to the notion that the young lady was bringing up about the turbulence and the wakes? In, in the five-mile-an-hour zone, no-wake zone, versus turbulence created by one of these devices and potential damage to vessels? Is there that likelihood?
I don't know if there's a way to quantify it. I have received, or have heard of complaints from the American Legion, as an example, which is the marina right next to Marina Park. They, in fact, I just heard last week from somebody that they have not been happy with it from the wake perspective, because it, it causes wakes for the vessels that are at their marina. How to equate it, I'm, I'm not quite sure, but as the videos show, it, there is wake. There is just no way around it.
Okay. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dean O'Malley. I'm the president of Jetpack America, so I want to thank you again for giving me a chance to speak on this issue of the jetpack operations in Newport Harbor. Since I only have three minutes, I'll try and keep it brief. At last year's June 24 city council meeting, Councilman Curry stated the goal of the ad hoc jetpack committee should be to find a framework for inclusion rather than to simply prohibit this new activity on the water. So over the past eight months, we've been trying to have collaborative conversations about how we can set that, that framework up. And here are just a few points that may or may not have been taken into consideration by the harbor commission when they voted to ban all jetpack operations in the harbor. Over our four-year history, we have proven that we can operate an extremely safe business for our customers and the people around us in the harbor. Our business provides extensive additional safety features that other harbor-based businesses do not, and we are as safe or safer than any other business out on the water. The reality is, we have an instructor who has the ability to kill the power in case of a close call. We have constant communication with our customers via We have constant communication with our customers via a walkie-talkie helmet system. So these are things that people don't always realize when they see that on the water, but once you've actually seen the operation in action, you realize there's a lot of oversight that we do have in place. With our mobile operation, we've operated in five different locations in the harbor, proving our flexibility. We have maintained open communication with Harbor Resources to ensure compliance with all rules and regulations. We've conducted our own sound tests to measure decibel levels at various distances from our flight area. We have also taken measures to reduce the sound output from our equipment, and we will continue to do so. We have worked directly with residents to minimize disruption from our day-to-day activities. We have created a Newport Beach Operations Plan as a way to put more structure around our operation. This will follow the Ops Plan that we currently have in place in San Diego, where we're fully integrated into the water activities offered to the public. We have completed and submitted our 2015 Marine Activities Permit application to Harbor Resources, now that the moratorium for applications has passed. We have worked very closely with the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce and Visit Newport Beach to increase tourism and support local businesses. We have been the leader in bringing an extensive positive media exposure to the city. We have very quickly climbed the ranks of the local activities to become the number-one outdoor activity on TripAdvisor, beating out Duffy Rentals, Davy's Locker, and Pirate Coast Paddle Company, all very well-established businesses. We've also been selected by the U.S. Coast Guard to help develop their nationwide rules and regulations for commercial jetpack operators, proving our status as a leader in the industry. Over the course of our four years, we've had zero citations from Harbor Patrol. Although the vessels do have the ability to go 30 miles an hour, we do respect the no-wake zone and the five mile an hour zones in the harbor. We have proven that we can coexist out on the water. Our instructor throttle control system and helmet communication systems allow us to keep our customers safe. I'll skip to the end here. Ultimately, we do have a very small footprint. If you look at the map up here, we are able to operate in about a 50-by-50 area, and the ability to bring someone down into the water to let traffic flow by is a big part of why we should be considered to be able to stick around. So thank you again for letting me speak. We're confident if we work together, we can find a solution that works for everyone involved. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Curry.
Dean, before you go, it's been suggested by some that you could relocate your operations outside the jetty and work off of the beach, so to speak. Can you speak to the economic viability of that approach?
We've definitely considered it, and first and foremost, the open ocean is not a great location to be training first-time customers, and that's the majority of our business. Experienced pilots can operate out there and do so safely, but first-timers is not a good spot for it. And also, from a financial standpoint, getting customers to that location, having the right vessels to support it, wouldn't be viable for us. So unfortunately, if we do, if this does get banned in the harbor, we will have to shut down all of our operations here in Newport Beach.
I got a question for you also. Is the power unit used, is it like a jet ski or a wave runner?
It is a jet ski.
Are they two-stroke or four-stroke?
Four-stroke.
Four-stroke. And how many RPM do you run them at when you're pouring someone up in the air?
Year between 3,000 and 5,000 for most customers.
That's a question.
Mayor Fortin Dixon.
How many customers, maybe you know this precisely, have you serviced or served in Newport Beach since you've been operating?
In Newport Beach, we're probably close to 5,000. We've done around 15,000 across all of our locations. So we're currently the most experienced operator in the world.
How many per week, per day?
Obviously, we're seasonal, so in the wintertime, we're a lot slower, but in the summer, it can be 10 to 15 people a day. And that's six days a week.
And how many jetpacks do you have operating concurrently simultaneously?
Typically, it's only one. And we've been obviously limited in our operations here, so we haven't really had the ability to expand, and we want to have that discussion of, is it viable to expand? So we have open new locations. We would love to do more here, but we also want to work with the city to make it work.
So is this truly seasonal, May to September, or?
We operate year-round, but in the wintertime, it does slow down. So we'll usually be weekends, weekends, and then a couple days during the week, and it's just wear a wet suit and jump in the water.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. Kevin.
Mr. O'Malley, what are your hours of operations and weekends and holidays included?
Typically, our first flights will be 10:00 a.m. until about 5:00 p.m. And that's, as I said, it's gonna be weekends primarily, and then one or two days during the week in the wintertime. Summertime, we're usually six days a week with one day for maintenance, repairs, service.
Thank you. What's your response to the comment on the wake and the potential impact on docks and boats tied up in docks?
The main thing is that we have the ability to control, we as the instructors, we control the throttle. So if that person starts going too fast along the surface of the water, we can throttle them back down. We have the ability to communicate with them throughout their flight. So if they start going, because ultimately, you're using that power to either go higher or to go lower and faster. If they start going fast, we either throttle them down or have them go higher in the air. And the nice thing about it is that the water coming down does cascade and it does, it puts out a lot of whitewash, but it's actually very, very undisruptive in terms of the actual wake.
Thank you. Okay. No further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Councilmembers and Mayor, for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Zach Funston, and I'm the President of Mission Bay Sports Center in San Diego. Mission Bay Sports Center is a masterlessy holder of the City of San Diego since 1980. We have one of the largest public boat rental and youth camp facilities in California. Mission Bay Sports Center operates in the largest man-made aquatic park in the country. It is the most-used recreational body of water in America. We rent over 300 different types of recreational equipment and boats on Mission Bay, as well as host a 14-week summer youth program. Our program grew to 6,000 participants with ages ranging from four to 16 years old. Mission Bay Sports Center also has five other aquatic types of businesses that operate out of our leasehold. They all operate year-round, as well as out of the same area. Jetpack America has been a ten of ours going on four years now. We work closely with them and the City of San Diego lifeguards to create fly zones for jetpack training. These zones are established and enforced as the only areas flights can take place. To determine these locations, we took into consideration everything from emergency responders, boater safety who use the same area, residents of Mission Bay, Mission Bay Sports Center rental boats and the youth camp, the safety of jetpack customers and staff, and any noise issues that might arise from their operations. Every year, jetpack completes an operations plan for the upcoming year that gets approved and signed off by the City of San Diego lifeguards. Because at this time, we review and discuss any issues that occurred during the year and make changes to their operation plan so we can continue to build a safe and successful business setting. The United States Coast Guard has chosen Jetpack America to create a U.S. Coast Guard course that will train and be taught around the nation that solely addresses jetpack commercial operators. Before I take any questions from the council, let me conclude with this. Jetpack America is a leader in their industry. They have proven to operate safely, professionally, on the busiest recreational body of water in America. If we can make jetpack viable in Mission Bay, I have no doubt that it can work in Newport Harbor.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good day, ladies and gentlemen. My name's James Hawes, and I'm the District Director Chief for Prevention for the District 11 South for the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary. I've been asked by the local area Coast Guard to look into the jetpack operations in the area. My district covers from Morro Bay in the north to the Mexican border, Arizona, parts of Nevada, and Utah. Concerning jetpack operations as it is now with the Coast Guard, it regulates it one of two ways. If the owner is not, if the owner is not in any control of the vessel and the customer is in total control of the vessel, it is considered a recreational vessel and is, it is regulated that way. If the owner, as they call the instructors, has any control of it, then it is considered a passenger-for-hire vessel, commonly known to as a six-pack. Basically, they can't take more than six passengers. If the company operator has control, any control of the jetpack with the paying customer is engaged in jetpack activity, the Coast Guard will then regulate the operator to be in compliance with current and applicable laws and regulations. They are not required to be inspected by the Coast Guard, but must be in compliance. The Coast Guard commonly calls this an uninspected passenger vessel. They may receive a courtesy UPV exam by the Coast Guard Auxiliary to help them make sure they are in compliance. The current examination is very general to all UPVs, basically fishing boats, six-pack fishing boats, even the gondolas that you see in the harbors now and that fall into that category. However, now, they mentioned that they are coming up with a training program and also a form more specific to jetpack operations, also with other types of specific UPV operations. However, this takes time because it is the U.S. government. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
My name is Judy Cole. We live on the water on Via Lido and have experienced firsthand the operation of the jetpack, not only from our home, but also from our boats and our SUPs and on the water and our kayaks with friends and family. I'd like to address just a couple of the issues. As far as the wake goes, there's not just the wake from the operation itself, it's the wake from the jet skis that are monitoring and they're moving around quickly, trying to make sure that they're staying on top of it. And between the two of them, it can create an incredible wake, and we do have a video that I would be happy to email to our Honorable Mayor and the council. I'd like to address the Mission Bay comparison. Mission Bay in most of the areas doesn't even have a speed limit. It's incredibly larger and more spread out than any of the channels that we have in Newport Harbor. Jetpack runs a great business. It's fun. It's exciting to watch, but it needs an appropriate place to operate, and we just don't happen to have that in Newport. If you could put them in the middle of dunes with not a lot of other traffic coming and going, that would be great, but it doesn't happen to be an option. You know, I could compare our channels for all the boats, the sailboats, the powerboats, the party boats, the kayaks, the sailing programs, all of these vessels going down the highway, Newport Boulevard or PCH. And it's, it's beyond me how you would think that you would plop an air or a water-propelled business in the middle of PCH or Newport Boulevard. It's just inappropriate. We already have a code on the books that bans air-propelled vessels above the water, and I question why the water-propelled vessel above the water is that much different. The footprint of the jetpack operation is just too large to operate safely in the individual channels. We've seen, they say that they have plugs that they can pull so that they don't run into anybody, but we've all, we've seen them go right in smack into the middle of a regatta. We've seen them go into the middle of a Boy Scout kayak parade. We've seen them, just this past weekend, and here we are in the middle of the winter, it was a beautiful Valentine's Day, and they created a huge traffic jam just by being there at the entrance to the Rhine Channel. I urge you to accept the Harbor Commission's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Also, my first time in front of City Council, so excuse any, anything inappropriate. My name is George Farah. We live on the block of Eighteenth Street, facing the bay. We've attended just about every meeting that the Harbor Commission was, you know, went out of their way to go through. I think I've had personally at least eight meetings. We have many neighbors who are not able to make it because they're retired, they can't even go up the stairs, they just say, "Please, make sure our voices are heard." The jetpack operates basically a few doors down from most of us. And yes, they've moved from being right in front of us to being after the side, but we can't be outdoors. We can't have windows open. We've changed our upstairs windows and doors to triple pane, $8,000, whatever. We couldn't even afford to change downstairs, so we try and jam up upstairs. It didn't really make that much of a difference. So it's very invasive. It goes extremely fast. Five miles per hour is a joke because they're constantly accelerating. Without that acceleration, you can't go anywhere. So, and when Chris said, "It sounds like a vacuum cleaner," vacuum cleaner, leaf blower, you name it, that's what it sounds like all day long. New Year's weekend, the week before, the week after, they had a lot of business. We're all, it's very invasive. I agree with all the safety issues, but, and I'm not trying to take away from any safety issues or anything that the Commissioner just mentioned. I'm just trying to add that if we knew that today was gonna be looking into this issue from scratch, we could have had dozens of people from our area over here just to impress upon you the importance of what this means. So, anyway, again, we just appreciate your taking into account the invasiveness and as one of the Commissioners always said, the intensity that it creates. You just can't relax. You're just, you're like constantly stressed out when it's going on. Anyway, so that's what I have to say for right now, and if you would like, we can bring as many residents as you would like to just have them express their opinions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. How many more want to speak? One down in the front, if you will. Come on.
Excuse me. Hello, thank you for letting me speak. I am actually a yacht broker in Newport Harbor and a boater in Newport Harbor, and also part of Jetpack America.
Your name?
Chris Herman, sorry. And as a boater and a yacht broker, we, you know, we see the jetpack all the time. We're out there, I take friends out on my boat, we cruise the harbor, the first thing they want to do is go see the jetpack. And we'll cruise by and the jetpack's there, they're always in their place, they're not disrupting anything. It's what they want to see. It's, you know, my wake on my boat, it's about the same wake as the jet ski and the jetpack. It's the same thing. It's no different. If I cruise by the Rhine Channel or down Lido off there, it's the same thing. We know where the jetpack operates. We choose to go over and look at them. They cruise by, we watch them. They don't come close to us, they stay away, all that. So I think that there's a way that Jetpack America, jetpacks in general, can get along with boaters. I think it's, it's a thing that we can all do in the harbor. There's plenty of space. So that's from the boater's standpoint, and that's just me. And also, from Jetpack America, I've got a letter from one of our clients, one of our flyers, and he just wanted us to read this to you. He couldn't be here tonight. So, got a letter from Captain Ed, and he's, "Dear Newport Beach City Council, I'm Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I am in support of the renewal of Jetpack America's continued operation permit. I have flown with Jetpack America for almost three years and have always found the operation safe and courteous to its clients and surrounding community. As an airline pilot and aviation instructor, I am keenly aware of the most important aspects of flight operation, which is safety. Jetpack America conducts their operations with safety as their number-one priority. They staff their operations with multiple instructors and support personnel at all times. One instructor is in constant communication with the flyer, and there is never a lapse of attention. Another instructor is next to the flyer on a jet ski, providing close-up support should the flyer need immediate assistance. A third support person is nearby on the company pontoon. A fourth person shuttles the clients to and from the dock and pontoon, which adds the personnel available for safety purposes. In the office, there are at least two other staff members conducting safety briefings and training to the clients prior to the client going out to fly. This is at a minimum, and at times, there are additional employees available. This attention for detail-- This attention for detail creates a very safe operation. Jetpack America has always operated with the utmost respect for the residents and users of Newport Harbor. As a client flying the jetpack for almost three years, I am always reminded by the instructors to be mindful of my speed, to be aware of other boaters, kayakers, paddleboarders, and any other people also using the harbor. It is a reflection of the continuous attention and courtesy given by the instructors and personnel of Jetpack America to their neighbors. Having conducted departures from John Wayne Airport in Boeing, Airbus, and many other aircraft, I am keenly aware of noise restrictions and decibel levels. With respect to noise from jetpack, whether it is on the jetpack or the pontoon or on the beach close to the operation, I can attest that the noise level is lower than a jet departing John Wayne Airport flying overhead or some high-powered boat such as a Scarab passing by. The noise from the jetpack operation is minimal and not any higher than any other watercraft currently operating in Newport Harbor. Almost done. One additional benefit towards Newport Beach and the harbor is that I visit the area with my family and friends much more often, and this provides additional revenue to the restaurants and businesses. I live in Huntington Harbor, so I have a harbor in my own backyard, but because of Jetpack America, I now visit your harbor and area much more often. Thank you for your time, and I urge you to grant continued operation for Jetpack America. Sincerely, Captain Ed Valdez.
Thank you.
That's all I've got. Thank you.
Members of the council, Billy Whitford, I'm the Director of Newport Aquatics Center. I think, excuse me, the jetpack is a cool thing, and I think on an exhibition basis, perhaps, when you have the parades, it is an attraction, it's a crowd getter. I am here tonight to speak to the safety of it, not for the commercial operations. They're very proud of their safety records and their safety procedures. As I am very proud of our safety records and procedures, I move hundreds of kids through the harbor on a regular basis in human-powered craft, small outriggers, kayaks, and stand-ups. And my concern, not so much is, because we're at different parts of the harbor, is the commercial operation currently underway, but it's the what-if. For $6,000 to $9,000, someone can buy their own adapter and put it on their jet ski, and the day's going to come. Where are they going to go to do this throughout the harbor? They're going to come back to North Star Beach, right in front of our place, and I don't know how to regulate. I don't know how to protect. I can protect my paddlers, I can protect my kids, I can protect your children, but I don't know how to protect them against somebody that's not gone through a safety regulation, they're not required to, that has not gone through any type of operations, manual procedures, because they're not required to. So my concern tonight is the private operators, and they're going to come, trust me, one will turn into five, and they'll come in a car full and van full because someone will have it, and five friends will want to go down with them, and it's a 10-minute flight-ish times five or six guys, you've got hours of operation. North Star Beach is right next to the only boat ramp in the harbor. Most of the harbor local people, so to speak, probably won't be doing this, but they're going to come down from the other places in the area and launch their jet skis and come over and right away turn right, and so that they can get up in the air and enjoy it there. And it's a beach, North Star Park, North Star Beach is a public park right there, so they can, in between flights, they can just come in and hang out right there. Two years ago, we had a operator operating in between Fishing Game Dock and North Star Channels right there on a regular basis, not permitted. I spoke with Chris several times, and it did create an interesting, difficult, dangerous problem for us. I can't imagine one to five operators coming out, no age requirement, that anybody can afford to do, it seems like, in that price range. So I am not against jetpack, I'm not against the activity at all. Unfortunately, I think they're fighting an uphill battle in our harbor. If they want to try Huntington Harbor, they'll face the same thing. There's some areas, all these different harbors, I'm not sure in our harbor it's going to last very long if it does continue. So it's an uphill battle, but that's their battle, not mine. I can't transit in the areas indicated up here, the city's going to have a challenge, sorry, the city's going to have a challenge coming up also with rec services as Marina Park comes into fruition. They're going to be in aquatic program there with sailing and human-powered craft, that's going to limit their operation area as well, and they're going to be facing some of the same safety issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any more speakers? Okay, does anyone else want to speak? If you do, come on down in the front, please, so we can move this along.
I'm the mayor, members of the council. My name is Don Cole. I too live on the water. Just want to address a couple of things. The gentleman from Jetpack did say that they have checkpoints or check, but they have like three or four people out there. And the scary part is with a public person coming down and with a bunch of his buddies trapping one of these things on their back and going offline, they don't have any kill switches, they have no way to stop this thing if it gets going out of control, and it is, it's an accident wake waiting to happen. I've been a boater in this harbor since I was 21 years, 40 years ago. Not only do we have a five mile an hour speed limit in our harbor, but it's a no-wake zone, no-wake. So if the boat's going three miles an hour and it's creating a wake, it's going too fast. So any wake is too much of a wake for people who live on the water with their boats and the docks and the dinghies and the pylons. It's a no-wake zone. Thank you.
Hi, members of the council, I'm Eric Longobarty. I just wanted to point out something, that the Harbor Commission was a fact-finding body to get the facts and then present them and make their presentation as to what should be done about this issue. One of the facts I just wanted to bring to your attention is this notion that these devices are now $6,000, and, you know, that's basically what it takes to get into the hydroflight is sort of the term that we're using in the industry. They aren't. It requires a personal water device, watercraft, and the device, which together is a ballpark range now. They first started out at about $100,000, which made it a very expensive hobby, but now you do need a personal watercraft and the device, whatever kind of flying device it happens to be, a jetpack or a flyboard or a jet blade, there's a whole bunch of them now. But the bottom line is it's a $20,000 to $30,000 piece of equipment. In four years in operation here in Newport Harbor, there is one private operator that owns one of these devices. The notion that the mass proliferation and flood of even private or commercial operations is just a misnomer, I think, in my opinion. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thanks.
Thank you. Hey, one last chance. Any more speakers? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comments and bring it back to council.
So we're looking for some direction and to craft an ordinance that does X, whether it's the Harbor Commission's recommendation, or one provider in the harbor, or more providers in the harbor, or one commercial provider and no private providers.
Councilman Petros.
Dave, or Aaron, can we say that we will allow a commercial operator to provide this service yet prohibit individuals who do have the $20,000 to $30,000 to come into the bay? Wouldn't that be discriminatory?
No, you can absolutely do that.
Oh, we can?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Does the city of San Diego, or could we, maybe I'll just relate to our own experience, could we limit the number of permitted jet, what are, jet, what are we calling it? Water, hydro packs? Could we limit the number who operate, like the RFP is one?
Yeah, maybe what an option would be is to have an ordinance that basically bans them unless they have an agreement with the city, then you could do an RFP and get them under contract, where you get indemnity and insurance provisions, and then you go out and look at, you know, you basically do an RFP and select whoever the best operator is that can meet the criteria that you're looking for.
And we could set the hours of operation or conditions of operation.
Absolutely.
Councilman Curry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Kenny and the Harbor Commission. I think they did a workmanlike and a diligent job and a serious job and a methodical job in looking at this issue and in taking public testimony and visiting with the community and getting the input that we needed to make a decision. I learned many things from both the briefing that Mr. Kenny gave me and also from the presentation that the Commission made. Now, when I, when we did declare the moratorium and send this out, I did say to the Commissioners, I hope that we find a way to get to yes and to do this in a structured and regulated way that enables this business to continue in our harbor in a safe and compatible way with the other harbor uses that we have. I am concerned about the proliferation of private activity vehicles. People get these, we have people in Newport that get a lot of toys for Christmas, and you could see half a dozen people get one for Christmas and decide they're going to go out and pop on it and do it, and without a spotter, without a kill switch, without anybody, you know, or with any instruction for that matter, or people who get one in communities away from our city and bring it down and want to, you know, because we're the closest water that they want to pop it into. And I'm very concerned about that business and that proliferation of that activity, and I think we ought to have restrictions that prevent us from having that. I'm also concerned about people who sit up an A-frame sign and step out on the beach and think they've got a business and go into this commercially. We were beginning to see the start of that, which is what I think prompted the whole idea for the moratorium in the first place. So to pick up on the idea of the Mayor Pro Tim, I think if we're going to do this, we ought to think about a franchise that incorporates, or whatever you want to call it, that incorporates operating conditions, that we have a process where we select the responsible operator, it goes for whatever many years, and then we rebid it eventually. But let's limit this to a single operator, and I will tell you, I was there when they kicked this service off with Dean O'Malley in Newport and when he took off to use the jetpacks to go to Catalina. I think he's an outstanding operator, and I think that his business has been run in a responsible way in our community during the time that he's been here in Newport, and I think it's an important aspect to tourism. It's an important aspect to providing amenities in the harbor that appeal to a broad cross-section of people. So I continue to be in the camp that says I'd like us to find a way to get to yes. I'd like us to be able to do that in a way that is cognizant of the Coast Guard's recommendations, cognizant of safety in the harbor, and cognizant of not allowing the proliferation of people who get one for Christmas and want to go out there the next day without any training, without any safety, or want to bring one down from someplace else and put it in the water here because it's close water. And so I think we do need to have some structure and some regulation, but I don't think we need to have an absolute prohibition. So I'd be supportive of, call it whatever you want, a franchise or an authorization or a limited license for a limited operator to continue this business.
Any other comments? Councilman Piotr.
Thank you. Chris, somebody mentioned putting something in the Back Bay. Are we not allowed to go in there with this kind of equipment because of the marine-protected animal area?
Motorized vessels are allowed to approximately the Newport Aquatics Center just a tad further. I can only imagine the complaints that I would hear. If it was on a commercial basis, out of respect to the Dover Shores community, I wouldn't recommend it because they've voiced their opinion on other commercial boating charter-type activities. On a private basis, as Mr. Whitford said, there would be nothing that would stop them from coming there. From a fishing game perspective, a California fishing wildlife perspective, I can only imagine the phone call that I would probably get asking, what is this all about and why are they up here?
So did the Harbor Commission consider the Back Bay as one of the allowable areas to go and use this, or is...
No, they did not.
They didn't consider it one way or the other?
Oh, pardon me. They considered all the locations, but the Back Bay, except for the Inner Lagoon at the Newport Dunes, but we didn't approach them, and that's a secluded, quote-unquote, private area.
Okay, so you considered it and decided against it?
Yes.
Yeah, Dave, I would say that I'm kind of in Keith Curry's camp here. I'd love to see it work, if we can come up with a way to do it and do it safely. I'm not sure I want to lock in one, but I like the idea of being competitive and not have them proliferate with a bunch of private users as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Muldoon?
Yes. Personally, I appreciate the Commission's time and effort on this plan. I definitely join the prohibition of private craft throughout the harbor, especially as the technology is emerging, becomes to a point where it becomes safe and more commonplace throughout the nation or the area, we can look at changing that. Regarding one operator, I am a little concerned about one operator continuously being in the same area, causing, you know, some hardship for the residents of Lido, so I'm interested in finding out all the areas genuinely that are acceptable and potentially rotating throughout those areas and allowing, you know, what I view as a grandfathered business to continue to operate within the harbor, finding a way to get to yes, and potentially looking at if not locations, but hours of operation that would be more appealing to the residents in the area. Thank you.
Tony?
Yeah, I'm falling into that camp as well. I like the Mission Bay model where the RFP is created and circulated to all potential vendors, so the competition, you get open competition and the ability to have those that could come out. But I do like the notion of having one vendor because then it would limit the impact. So the competition side would be on the ability to come into our harbor, yet we would minimize the impact. I have seen this operate in the bend of the bay near the Mobile Home Park and just north of the Liberty or the Fourth of July Bridge, whatever it's called now. So I've seen it there. That could be one location, but I do, I do like the direction that this is going. I'd like to find some way to get to a qualified yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Dixon?
And that's where I'm headed, too. The gentleman who mentioned Marina Park, and we're going to be seeing a whole new set of water-related activities in that area. Maybe that's a good thing if this device were to be concentrated in that area. I agree with Councilmember Muldoon on being sensitive and the rotating areas would be, I would prefer that as well to mitigate the intensity of noise or disruption to one specific area. Basically, I'm coming down to what we've all said and find ways to allow an operator, I would like to see an RFP, competitive RFP process, selecting one operator with very specific conditions of use and hours of operation, and maybe adjustments for seasonal, and to be respectful of the nearby residents with an X number, 100 feet, and other conditions that would be respectful of that. I'd like to see how that looks. Thank you.
Okay. Now, I'm in general agreement with the other comments made by the rest of the council, but I do have one question. How can we regulate or restrict the private use of them? Does that mean that if we don't like cigarette boats, we can ban cigarette boats in the harbor?
Well, I think there's a lot of public interest to regulate it because you've identified the difference between the commercial operations and the personal operations. I think that that'd be an appropriate ban and that that would be perfectly legal.
What would, what criteria would we use for our legal justification, if you would, for distinguishing between the two types of operations?
These vessels, Mr. Mayor, these vessels are a little bit different than your typical vessel in the harbor due to the space they take up. So for safety reasons, one of the Harbor Commissioner Ad Hoc Committee, they actually considered the compatibility with other uses. So in your example of can we ban one particular type of powerboat versus another, we'd need to make those specific findings why that particular powerboat would be somehow more detrimental than another vessel. And in this instance, if we wanted to do the same, we'd have to make similar findings based on the usage, and the videos Chris was showing, you could see they, they actually don't stay in one location like a typical vessel does going a straight path. These kind of wander north, south, east, west, and even under the water to a certain extent, as the video showed. So to answer your question, we would have to make those findings, and that would have to be a part of anything we do here today.
Okay, we have the authority to do that irrespective of Coast Guard regulations?
We do have the authority.
And how they define what type of craft it is?
We do have the authority to adopt regulations based on health and safety, and that's where I think this regulation would come down, is based on the use.
Perhaps another variation would be, in our code, we have a no-house boats rule, so there's a different boating use. And then, of course, we do prohibit, like, planes, floating planes from coming in.
Or hovercraft, for instance. That's currently prohibited as well.
Okay, good answer. Okay, so you have enough direction?
Let me ask staff, if you feel comfortable, we have enough information to develop the ordinance? Okay. Just for the public at home, then the next step then the staff would bring forward for first reading, an ordinance that would enact this, so if you have an interest in that, please keep following this issue. This is just a study session where the council gives us guidance on what to do next.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have public comments. Madam Clerk?
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on items listed on the agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Okay, public comments on non-agenda or closed-session items. Please come forward.
Mayor Selich and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher, and I would like to speak to closed-session item C, which is a notice as a conference with real property negotiators about the Seminole Slough, which is the historic watercourse of the Santa Ana River that winds around the Newport Shores community in West Newport. The city has, for a long time, talked about dredging the slough, which in many of our minds, I think, gave us the impression that the city already owned the slough and was responsible for it. And there's also been a related issue that the city's subdivision map shows that when Newport Shores was laid out, there was supposed to be a public accessway or road between the homes and the waterfront, so the public could enjoy that waterfront. And now, out of the blue, we see that the city, according to this announcement, is negotiating to buy or sell some portion of the slough. My point about this is, to the best of my knowledge, there has been no public discussion about this, and the closed-session item is limited, as the notice says, to discussing the price and terms of payment. It's rather similar to something that happened last year when we, public began seeing notices about negotiations about the road and track building over on Monrovia Avenue and wanting to sell that to a private entity without any public discussion of whether it was wise or not for the public to hold on to that. I really don't know the details of what this is about. Obviously, for the notice, I can't tell anything. The adjacent homeowners may have been notified and know why you're meeting about this, but I do not, and I think the public as a whole should be privy to a public discussion among the council of why we're entering into negotiations about the ownership of the slough. Price and negotiation, price and terms of payment is fine, but the groundwork has not been laid for, for what is the reason for doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll now adjourn to closed session. Mr. Harp, do you have anything to announce on the closed-session items?
Yes, the city council will adjourn to closed session, discuss labor negotiations between the city and all represented employees with the city's labor negotiator, city manager Dave Kiff, and to meet with the legal counsel regarding the litigation matters entitled Pacific Shore Properties Newport Coast Recovery and Woody's Group Inc. versus the city of Newport Beach, and to meet with real property negotiator Lauren Wooding to discuss the possible acquisition of two parcels commonly known as the Seminole Slough. Thank you.
Thank you.